Good evening. I would like to bring the February seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Colto?
Ms. Foyle?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. McGarvey?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Uh, Mr. Evans is on speakerphone this evening.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Burns, could we have the invocation and the, uh, pleasantries?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening, the Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could, uh, we have our student representatives, Abby Marola and Katie Receiva-Sever?
Yesterday, February sixteenth, we reached a hundred days of school. Students at the kindergarten academy celebrated with a parade in the gym and a canned food drive. Author Lindsey Barrett George visited January fifteenth to present her illustrations and stories based on nature. Afterwards, she autographed books. Book club resumed in January. Boys and girls accompanied by a parent read a book and participated in a craft.
At Glendon School on January seventh, they held a study skills night for grades one through four parents to learn different techniques for studying. January fourteenth, we held a respect program sponsored by J.P. Mascaro. This program is to educate students on respect and why we need it. On January fifteenth, middle school held its winter dance sponsored by Student Council. Student of the Month Assembly was held on January twenty-ninth. Students were picked on being the friendliest.
In January, Prospect Park's eighth grade students visited the high school for a tour and activities fair in participation and preparation for a freshman course selection. Middle school students were rewarded for positive behavior throughout the second marking period with trivia and two periods of student-selected activities like baking, painting, and dodgeball.
At Norwood School, we would like to congratulate the following instrumentalists for being selected to participate in the Southern Delaware County Middle School Band Program. Kim Comney and Matt Dashuski from eighth grade, Marcus Sabray and Connor Schaefer from seventh grade, Kenan Liu and Katrita Udowanka from sixth grade. On January twenty-first, middle school held its annual spelling bee. Congratulations to first-place winner Madison Brown from seventh grade and second-place winner Amber Burkheimer from eighth grade.
On February fifth, Tinnicum held its annual bingo night. Through the support and help of our community and volunteers, we were able to raise two thousand six hundred dollars. Tinnicum School is fifty years old this year, and for anyone who has called Tinnicum School home, there will be an anniversary celebration on April thirtieth from eleven to two P.M. Keep an eye on the website for additional information.
At the high school on January fifth, Interboro students and parents attended French Heritage Night where the Flyers defeated the Montreal Canadiens. Our junior-senior party was postponed to January thirtieth due to the blizzard, thanks to all the chaperones who came out to make the night memorable. The eighth grade activities fair was held on January twenty-first and twenty-second. On January twenty-ninth, the high Q team did very well but was edged out by Rochester. And finally, don't forget, many times March eighteenth from five to twelve.
We would also like to make an announcement for all young bucks K through fifth. Don't forget that this Saturday, there will be a winter wonderland dance held in the high school cafeteria. We have a list of guests who have prepaid, but tickets will be sold at the door for five dollars a person. Students must be accompanied by an adult eighteen years or older. Pizza, drinks, and baked goods, as well as pictures, will be available for purchase. Please dress appropriately. Thank you for your support of After Prom 2016.
This concludes our report.
Thank you. Uh, recognition, Mr. Burns?
Yes, at this time, if the, uh, all board members could take a seat in the front rows in recognition of Coach Tobin's two-hundredth win.
As parents and coaches, we try to instill in our athletes that they should consistently challenge themselves, particularly through the preseason, and to ask, how much work am I getting done when no one else is watching? What is your plan for improvement outside of mandatory practice? This is where it all starts. As coaches, we ask our student-athletes, how committed and dedicated are you to yourself and your team? This may be your senior year or your freshman year, but you will create a brotherhood or a sisterhood that will last for a lifetime. Every time you step out onto that mat, you look at your teammate to the right of you and to the left of you. Did you work just as hard as they did? Did you work just as hard as they did on and off the field, the playing surface? As an athlete, we ask you to challenge yourself with the following questions and resolutions. How can I keep my motivation as high on day thirty-one as I did on day one? How well will I show my self-driven accountability for my own improvement this season by coming up with a self-improvement plan and sticking to it, even when nobody is watching? For those of you who understand wrestling, there is no tougher sport where the aforementioned statements ring more true. When all of these questions are answered and the coach is able to bring his team to victory, there is no greater sense of accomplishment. Tonight, I am privileged to recognize a man who has committed nearly twenty years to the district coaching wrestling here, and not only brought his team to victory once, but more than two hundred times. I would like to congratulate Coach Dan Tobin for achieving that milestone. At this moment... At this time, I would like to bring Coach Milai to the podium to talk about Coach Tobin.
Uh, as Principal Johnson has explained, my name is Coach Milai, and we're here to recognize and honor a, a very valiant man who achieves over two hundred wins in the wrestling community. Now, two hundred wins i-is a huge feat when you talk about, number one, the state that we're competing in, which is the number one state in the country. High school wrestling i-is by far known to be a Pennsylvania sport, so to achieve two hundred wins in that is immensely impossible to even understand. There's a couple hundred other numbers that are important, though. High school wrestling for Interboro has been around for fifty-two years, and out of those fifteen-two years, Dan Tobin has coached for eighteen of them. So, well over a third of them has been coached by that man. And in that timeframe, he's been able to achieve over two hundred victories, as Mr. Johnson said. There's also a couple other numbers that we should know to see, understand how successful this was. Prior to it, there were seven coaches that coached in thirty-four years. In those seven coaches, they achieved one state qualifier, and they achieved zero hundred win components, and they only won one Del Val championship. In the eighteen years that Coach Tobin has coached, we've won six Del Val championships. We've taken seven people to a hundred-win category. We've sent six people to states, one medalist. We've sent two of those people back to states for a second year. We have four district champions, and we have four regional runner-ups who were just points shy of actually taking home the championship there. So, when you compare the feats of the seven men that Tobin was looked on, nobody matched up to him. And even if you put them all together, they still wouldn't match up to him. So, thank you, Coach Tobin, for your wonderful service, and I look forward to many years to come. Thank you to your family for sacrificing him, because I know that when he comes home all, all red in the face, and he's angry, and he's happy, you guys get to hear the best and the worst from him. Thank you very much. I'd like to call our superintendent, Ms. Riley up.
Coach Tobin, come on up here.
On behalf of the Board of School Directors and the administration, I'd like to congratulate you and thank you for your years of service to the Interboro School District wrestling in the wrestling program and what you've brought to the table and have the honors that we've had having you here. Uh, many of our kids have benefited from you as a coach, as being a role model, and you are very well-respected throughout the county on your, as a coach, and I think that has a lot to say about the programs we have here in Interboro and what you have done with it. So, I want to thank you for your time and recognize what you have brought to the table here in Interboro for our wrestling program. We do have a plaque for you, which we will get to you tomorrow. I apologize it is not here this evening, um, but it's a plaque in recognition of your two-hundredth win and thanking you for your time here. So, if we could give Coach Tobin a round of applause. And if the board members would please come up so that we can take a picture over here with Coach Tobin.
Thank you. No, I don't want to sound good.
He does not want to say a couple words. We all...
Take a picture?
Yeah. The other rest are next to me.
Ryan?
We just have one public, uh, comment signed in tonight, Mr. Zerdy Dobie.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Zerdy Dobie, Tinnicum. At last month's meeting, uh, during number six and tonight's during number six, uh, I asked if the solicitor would comment on whether the school district was party to, uh, two appeals made by property owners, one at the airport and the other one was the former Westinghouse owner, which is Castleway. You refused to, to, to comment on that. Now, what are you trying to cover up? What are you trying to hide? You know, it's a simple question, and if the solicitor doesn't have an answer, then they should respond and that they don't have an answer at the time. But to ignore the question, uh, is a problem. Number sixteen point two. Now, you're going to have, uh, a settlement for this property, and so is that property having a reduction in their, their amount or an increase in their amounts? It is a reduction, Mr. Dobie. It is a reduction. Yes, sir. So, you're, uh, the school district is losing, uh, funds from the taxation of that property. Not by choice, sir. Well, I understand that it's just the appeals process that it goes forward with. That, uh, seems to be, it's going to be an ongoing trend. Now, at the, uh, Finance Committee meeting, this is number, uh, number nine, that you're going to have a report on it, at that meeting, the superintendent and the finance director were instructed to seek or look into the, a one-point-eight percent increase in the taxes, uh, to be imposed for exceptions to the, um, I guess, the Department of Education. And did you have any response from the Department of Education, uh, which said that you can go forward with that one-point-eight increase, making the total a five percent increase, uh, for this, uh, incre, uh, the tax increase that you want, without seeking a voter referendum? Not at this time, Mr. Dobie. We didn't get, they didn't get back to us yet. I, I, I didn't underst, did you say that they, you haven't gotten any response from the Department of Education? Not at this time. Not at this time. Well, uh, it's, you just raised our taxes last, uh, last month, three-point-two percent, and then to have, at the Finance Committee, say that you want an additional one-point-eight with hav, having all the, you know, Mr. Phelps, you weren't there, but the rest of the board and my representative, Mr. Eckert, just sit there and say, nothing. Another increase, and you said nothing. Not one question as to why do we need this? What is the necessity for this increase? You just sat there as though we're, you know, another increase? Sure, why not? That's, uh, something that doesn't make any sense. Also, at that Finance Committee meeting, at the end, it says, here's the, here's the agenda, and it says executive session. Under executive session, it says there's nothing listed. Now, here's the open records, public meetings, and open, uh, sunshine laws, and the right-to-know laws. Under this, this, uh, document, it says that if you hold an executive session, that you are to make public what you discussed, not in detail, but in general, what the executive session was about. Now, there's no doubt that you've had court cases, uh, that you've had instituted in, you know, against the, uh, school district or the school district has, has made, and you've discussed them in executive session, but you have yet to, to produce any documentation following the, the sunshine laws regarding that. So, that's, uh, seems to be a, a problem with that, that, you know, I don't know what you're trying to, to cover up with regards to that. The next is the contract for the secretaries. Uh, the former school board president, Mrs. Hoggard, said that you had been discussing this, and I would like to have an update on that, where you are in the negotiations. Last month, you approved in the, your, uh, finance bills, a bill for, from Eckert Siemens for fifteen thousand dollars. This month, you're approving five thousand dollars for Eckert Siemens. Now, they're supposed to be the ones who are negotiating, I, for contracts, so if they're not, if you're, there's no movement in that contract, why are they charging us so much money? And so, I'd like you to answer, uh, some of those questions, and...
President Phelps?
That's it.
May I address, uh, the, the tax, uh, voting? Because I had addressed it at the last meeting, and I thought I made a clear record of it, but may I address that again, just so everyone's clear on my comments from the last meeting?
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Dobie, as always, I, I always appreciate your comments because it shows interest from, from not only the community but holds the board accountable. Um, but I always want to make sure that accuracy is at the forefront of anybody's comments and our responses. And I, I made it a point at the last meeting to address what you had raised, an issue with us raising, as a board, raising taxes at three-point-two percent, and I, I thought I had stressed and emphasized that it was just a prelim, preliminary number that we used to make a calculation. We didn't vote on that. We haven't passed that. Taxes have not been raised, but we need to figure out our budget, and we need to figure out a number that we're going to look at, what we're allocating and where. And with the number that we chose was three-point-two percent. Doesn't mean that taxes are, are raised at three-point-two percent. It was just, it's not to exceed that number. Okay? So, that's where we were running our, our maximum. So, I, I wanted to make that clear because I know that that's an issue for you, and I just wanted to make sure that you understood. We haven't voted on raising taxes, but we were just running numbers preliminarily at a number not to exceed that three-point-two percent.
I, I, I understand what you said, but I just want to, you know, when you make a motion and you put this in paper and write it on the paper, I'm going to read to you what exactly it says. Uh, notice that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached preliminary budget, general fund budget, for the fiscal year July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, with the proposed expenditures of sixty-eight million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven, five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, requiring an increase of one-point-zero-eight-five-seven, eight-five-nine mils over the current millage rate, resulting in a tax increase of three-point-two percent, for a new total millage rate of thirty-five-point-zero-two-two-one. Now, that contradicts what you're, and I understand what you're saying about the preliminary, and I, I get that. You know, it's been the, the, what, what the school board has done over a num, most school boards do it over a number. They, they, they go in high, and then they come in low at the end, and they say, oh, didn't we do such a good job? Well, that's nice, but I want you to address this five percent that you, that you voted, that you instructed the, again, the superintendent and the finance director to look forward, to, to go forward without having it before, put before the voters in a referendum to get that, uh, raise. So, uh, with that, um, and again, my issue with the, you know, with that increase, it's even more of, of an irritation to me when the airport agreement, and you gave away eight-hundred thousand dollars, and you said that you read the agreement with the airport, and I think Mr. McGarvey said that he did, uh, and the other board, new board direct, oh, Mr. Chabon said he did. And, uh, the other, whether the other board directors have had a chance to read that document and review and get this eight-hundred thousand dollars recovered so that that three-point-two or five percent would not be that amount, and that's what needs to be done. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dobie. Uh, can we move on to motion number five, Mr. Burns?
Motion number five, minutes. Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on January twentieth, two thousand sixteen, be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine-zero. Uh, our next item is Solicitor's Report. Mr. Angeles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our office has been engaged in handling the following matters on behalf of the district: tax assessment appeals, special education, and professional development. And this concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on to number seven, Mr. Burns.
Number seven, financial. Seven point one. Motion that the attached treasures report for the month ending in January thirtieth, two thousand, I believe it should be January thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine-zero.
Motion seven point two. Motion that the fund dis, disbursements in the amount of five million, one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and eleven cents be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine-zero.
Seven point three. Motion that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine-zero. Uh, Mr. Burns, correspondence?
None.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Uh, at this time, we will, uh, go into our committee reports. Uh, Mr. Evans is absent tonight, so Mr. McGarvey will be doing his report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, Finance Committee Report for February second, two thousand sixteen. Uh, the Finance Committee meeting was commenced at six oh five on February's second, two thousand sixteen. All members of the board, as well as administrators and members of the public, were present. Mr. High School presented the, uh, committee with a preliminary budget update showing a one-point-zero-four-mil reduction. Even with these additional reductions, we're still projecting a budget shortfall of three-point-one million dollars. Mr. High School and Superintendent Riley committed to continuing an investigation into the line item budget to see what further reductions were available. Mr. High School also provided a summary of committee fund balance major projects, pointing out that some have been completed, some are ongoing, and with the projected shortfall, others may have to be deferred. Mr. High School also provided financial statements current as of January thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and a list of projections describing the one-point-zero-four-mil reduction that included savings in electric and natural gas consumption, decrease in gasoline and diesel costs, and maintenance of vehicles. The Finance Committee agreed that every effort should be undertaken to find additional reductions, and that the board would not pursue an increase higher than the state allowed index. There was, again, discussion from other board members regarding the PA state contribution, early retirement savings opportunities, deferral of some capital projects as, as any outsourcing, bulk buying opportunities have been, uh, overlooked. Members of the board also discussed the bond rating and debt service, along with deferring the HVAC projects at Glen Olden School and the kindergarten academy. However, no decision has been made regarding this. Meeting was adjourned at seven oh eight P.M. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGarvey. Uh, moving on to GBO, Mr. Eckert?
The GBO meeting was called to order immediately after the Finance Committee, um, ended. Uh, there were several, um, items on the agenda. One of them was, on February third, two thousand sixteen, Governor Tom Wolf signed Senate Bill eight-eight-zero into law, delaying the requirement for high school students to reach proficiency on three Keystone examinations, Algebra One, Literature, and Biology, in order to graduate. With this new legislation passing, the three Keystone examinations for graduation is a requirement beginning with the class of two thousand nineteen, our current freshmen and below. Over the next six months, the Pennsylvania Department of Education will investigate alternatives in addition to use of Keystone examination as a graduation requirement. Per state legislation, students are required to take the Keystone examination following the completion of the, the identified Keystone course. Student scores on the Keystone examination will continue to be reported on the school performance profile for the high school and to be used for federal accountability. Students are encouraged to do their best on Keystone examinations as they still serve as a measure of students' understanding of mastery of standards. If students do not achieve proficiency on their initial attempt at a Keystone examination, they will have opportunities to retake the examination during subsequent administrations. In short, um, the Keystone exams are on hold, uh, but they are still very important to the school district and to the students as well. There were two other items on that, that particular evening. We are looking at, looking into a contractor, to administrator, some COBRA. We are looking at, looking into a contractor, to administrator, some COBRA, the COBRA for the benefits. There'll be no change in that program whatsoever, it's just more of a clerical administration option that we are investigating at this time. The other discussion item was the Tinnicum Township Playground. As everyone knows, part of the airport agreement was set aside money for Tinnicum. We are going to use some of those funds to put in a new playground at Tinnicum. The present playground is 15 years old, it's in very bad shape. We're putting a more up-to-date one, more safer, and that is on a agenda item this evening. With the passage tonight that should go into works, the new playground should be installed over the summer for use in September. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. 9.3. Mr. Burns, legislative update?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last meeting, I indicated we were all hoping for a new budget to be approved. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and at the risk of speculating, it doesn't look like it will be in place anytime soon. I did also promise a more detailed analysis of what was going on, and fortunately, although we're at an impasse, Governor Wolf proposed a budget for 2016 and 2017. And just to give you a quick overview of that, it's a $32.7 billion budget, which includes a $2.2 billion increase over proposed 2015 and 2016, which that was a $377 million increase in and of itself. What that means for our school districts across the Commonwealth, it's a $500 million increase. In terms of basic education funding, the proposed $200 million increase for '16 and '17 would be distributed through the basic education funding formula. Ready-to-learn block grants are rolled into that line of $250 million. What it means for special education funding is a $50 million increase in special education funding, distributed through the special education funding formula. Ultimately, where we are now, there are increases across the board for Plan Con, for pre-K, for CTEs, all have increases, but there are cuts as well. The impacts that it could have if this budget is passed, again, it's just a proposal, it's not been voted on, it's not been passed, but there could be a billion-dollar cut to pre-K, to 12 education, because where we are right now, in the impasse, is if we compare the budgets in the shortfall exceeding that $2 billion, it could lead to cuts in pre-K, no funding for school constructions, no funding for state-related universities, potential cuts for vital human services, increase in debts. And every school district around the Commonwealth right now is struggling with potential cuts with that shortfall if it exceeds $2 billion. We don't know what the date is for each district, it's something that we need to consider, and I encourage everyone to contact your representatives, and let them know that it's a serious issue that needs to be addressed, and we need to reach a resolution with this. concludes my report. Mr. President Phelps?
Thank you, Mr. Burns. 9.4. Delaware County Community College, Mr. Chavone?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The last liaison meeting was held on January 20th, and I was unable to attend due to our board, monthly board meeting that month. However, I did receive the agenda, and topics that were discussed were spring 2016 enrollment figures, dual enrollment and distant education opportunities, and strategies for student retention. If you have any questions about opportunities with the Delaware County Community College, please feel free to email me, I will do my best to answer your questions. The next Liaison Committee meeting is March 30th. And lastly, there will be a school board appreciation dinner on October 26th, 2016, and all board members are invited to attend. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. 9.5. Mr. Harris, Delaware County IU?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on February 3rd, 2016, which was my birthday, just putting it out there. Accepting resignations of Philip Hopkins from Haverford Township School District, also approve appointments for the following DCI board members: Mr. Russ Bellato, Haverford Township School District; Mr. Christopher DeSantis, Springfield School District; Charlie Warren, Chester Upland School District; and Mrs. Kathy Hilfordy Pendelco School District. Also approved was an agreement with the Pennsylvania Family Support Alliance to continue professional development for training, approved to create a new program and teaching positions for the DCTS Exercise Therapy and Sports Science Program, also approved to enter an agreement with the Arts Institute of Philadelphia. For more information and happenings and news, go to DCIU.org, or contact me directly. And that's for you, Justin, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving right along, Mr. Burns, motion number 10, please.
Point of order?
Yes, Mr. Eckert. Our student delegates? Oh, I'm sorry. The students can be excused now after the committee reports? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eckert, I slipped my mind. Okay, Mr. Burns, motion 10, please.
Motion 10, personnel. Whereas the following matters are presented for action by the Interboro Board of School Directors, therefore be, I have a motion 10.1 through 10.9 to be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero. Mr. Burns, next motion, please.
Motion number 11. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached teacher salaries per the Interboro Education Association Contract.
Second.
This motion requires a roll call, President Phelps, as well.
Yes, thank you. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Caldwell, could you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Boyle? Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns, 12, please.
Motion number 12. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached reclassification of the following people effective February 15th, 2016.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns.
Motion number 13. Office of Curriculum and Instruction. Motion that the following items be approved, items 13.1 through 13.5.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number 14. Office of Special Education Pupil Services. Motion that the following items be approved, item 14.1.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number 15. Office of Facilities. Motion that the following items be approved, item 15.1.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Eckert?
Well, this is a positive thing, I just want to, as I stated in my report, that the funds of this, for this project are coming from designated funds from the airport agreement for Tinnicum. From the layout of the pictures and the drawings here, it's a very nice set, it's more, it's safety, and I am sure the kids at Tinnicum will enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Anyone else? The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please, Mr. Burns.
Motion number 16. Office of Finance. Motion that the following items be approved, 16.1, 16.2.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number 17. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve Bernadette Riley to attend PSBA New School Director Training Program, which took place on February 1st, 2016, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, at a cost not to exceed $200, paid from district funds.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number 18. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached early retirement incentive proposal for the members of the Interboro Education Association for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
President Phelps, I should've said, this requires a roll call as well.
Yes. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Moving right along to old business?
There is no old business to address.
Okay, new business? Ms. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I'd like to congratulate the Unified Sports Bachi team on their first win against Marple Newtown on Tuesday. The Bachi team will be competing against Pencrest and Strathhaven on Tuesday, February 23rd, here at the high school. We don't have an exact time yet, but if you're available, please come out and watch this event. We're very proud of our students who are participating. If you're looking for something fun to do with your children this weekend, you heard our student reps mention the 2016 After Prom Committee is hosting a Winter Wonderland Dance here at the high school on Saturday evening from 6 to 8 for children and parents in grades kindergarten through five. If you would like more information, it's available on the high school website. Tonight, we recognize Coach Tobin on his 200th win. This is a big weekend coming up for the wrestling team, as they will be participating in the Del Val Tournament at Academy Park, so we want to wish them luck with that. And I'd like to thank Terry Davis and the students of Glen Olden for the lovely artwork this evening that we have here for the board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Any comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Ms. De Batista?
Yes, I just wanted to publicly congratulate Coach Tobin on his 200th win, and just his commitment to the district and to building our wrestling program here, and best of luck to the wrestling team this weekend. And just, if you have the opportunity, visit our website, take a look at the calendar, there's lots of great events coming up. You know, Mrs. Riley mentioned a few. There is our favorite, even though dodgeball stresses me out, the eighth-grade dodgeball tournament coming up in March, the Mini-Thon benefiting Pediatric Cancer, and Tinnicum Schools 50th Anniversary Celebration in April. So, many events, these were just to name a few, so please check them out and hope you can attend. And just regarding the Tinnicum Playground project, this was a very important project to me, and I just really want to thank the board for their support on this. It was really important that we use some of these airport funds to strictly go and benefit the students of Tinnicum, and then it's something that every single student at Tinnicum can enjoy. So, I'm just really thankful that I had everybody's support with that. And a lot of time and work went into the decisions and what, where the money was going to go to. Fortunately, we still have money left, but George Woolhaff, the facilities, you put in so much work putting this all together for us, and of course, you know, my, the principal, and Mr. Fanning, and Mrs. Farmer, everybody worked really hard to sort of get this done. So, just thank you. It's really important, the kids, they can't even imagine how great it's going to be. So, it's really nice to see something so positive happen for the kids at Tinnicum. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. De Batista. Any other board members? Myself, I would like to congratulate our Lady Bucks Middle School Basketball Team for their second consecutive Del Val Championship. Yay! Okay, and on behalf of the board, I would like to thank Mr. Werhoff and the custodial crew, and maintenance crew for the great job they did during this last ice and snowstorm that we had, clearing everything up. Any other board members? Hearing none. On Tuesday, March 1st, 2016, a Finance Committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 6:00 PM in our boardroom of the Administration Building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, at 6:30 PM. The next regular monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, March 16th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for coming tonight, meeting is adjourned.